Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Statute of flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have the roll call, I just want to apologize for our tardiness tonight. We had some important things that we had to cover prior to this meeting. Sorry for the delay. Fuzzy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
Non-members present.
Thank you. I would like to begin with a presentation tonight. It is my pleasure to once again welcome back the Bethel Park High School varsity competitive cheerleaders to our meeting for some well-deserved recognition for the fourth consecutive year. For the past four years, the squad has experienced great success at the local, state, national, and world levels. In 2016, they were the world and national champions. In 2017, they were state champions. Last year, they were Whipple champions, state runner-up and third-place finishers at Nationals. This year, the squad continued its tradition of excellence by capturing the Whipple championship for the second consecutive year and the state championship for the second time in three years. At this time, I would invite head coach Christina Zedrick to the front to help me present certificates of recognition to the girls for their hard work to bring two triceighs to Bethel Park.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Olivia Klingensmith. Ashley Hawes-Bah. Haley Vincent. Orin Mazacon. Riley Evans. This is not cheer-related, these crutches. Courtney Davis. Angela Vorco. Kelly Sheltman. Taylor Morsetti. Gabby Miller. Ashlyn Lutton. Coach Jill Lindberg, that's our head coach of the cheer program. It's me. Chelsea Mariani. Juliana Bell. Tatum Dowd. Natalie Scott. We just, the girls worked really hard all season long for this, so we're really proud of them and we're glad to be able to bring these back to Bethel Park and we're hoping we can make everybody proud, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Intent to adopt the agenda for business items. Approval minutes. I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Shall move.
I'm sorry, make a motion further.
Shall move.
Yeah. Your motion?
Second.
Second. She moved on second.
Moved on second to, motion to adopt, the intent to adopt the agenda for business items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated. Motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, minutes of January 22nd, 2019.
Shall move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated. Announcement of executive session February 26th, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Now, staff reports.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've been given this report and I'm happy to be back and able to share the following items of good news with you this evening. Twenty-two Bethel Park High School German students were recognized by the American Association of Teachers of German for their outstanding performance on the 2019 National German Exams. Bethel Park High School students had eleven of the top twenty scorers on the Level Four exam. Among the top ten scorers were Jerry Vargese, second place Sonia Haberstreet, fourth place Lily Wilson, seventh place Brandon Janis and Logan Zivik, who tied for ninth place. Earning gold medals for scoring in the ninetieth percentile or higher were Jerry Vargese, Sonia Haberstreet, and also Jacob Bauer on the Level Three exam. Jerry and Jacob are now in the running to earn a scholarship to travel and study in Germany this summer. Congratulations to all of the students who were recognized for their scores. Two Bethel Park High School freshmen earned second-place awards at the Eighty-Fifth Annual Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Competition, which was held at Duquesne University. Congratulations to Megan Urford and Anna Levis, whose projects both studied the effects of PH. Four members of the Bethel Park High School Forensics Team competed at the Harvard International Forensic Tournament and Senior Caleb Shook advanced to the quarterfinals of the Congress event at this prestigious competition. Because of his accomplishments at Harvard, he is now eligible to compete at the National Tournament of Champions at the University of Kentucky. Two Bethel Park High School students received the Extra Effort Award for the second quarter of the 2018-19 school year from the Steele Center for Career and Technology Education. Congratulations to Miranda Rush and Monica Forte, who are both students in the Cosmetology Program. Students are selected for this recognition based on their outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. Four Bethel Park High School students were named to the Director's List for the second quarter of the 2018-19 school year at Parkway West Career and Technology Center. Congratulations to Emily Bosco, Madison Cochran, Rachel Craven, and Sierra Tessari. Twenty-two Bethel Park High School vocalists successfully auditioned and were selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Region Chorus Concert. Congratulations to Jessica Abraham, Alexander Gankoviac, Kelsey Aaronhal, Kelly Fedko, Andrew Fullerton, John Glumow, Molly Hoffman, Abby Curick, Abalash Kristanichan, Bill Coomer, Anthony Lichetti, Ryan Merkel, Caitlin Markovecchio, Colin McCormick, Brian Pauley, Connor Remington, Kelsey Rogers, Maddie Schiedler, Cam Silman, Julian Stein, Jerry Vargese, and Anthony Will. Four Independence Middle School musicians have been selected to participate in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Junior High District Band. Congratulations to Sam Basil, Rebecca Tupper, Jason Tursky, and Lucas Varley. Their concert is coming up quickly, this Saturday, at Carrick High School. Several Neil Armstrong Middle School sixth-grade students have also been selected to participate in the upcoming PMEA music events. Ten musicians will participate in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Elementary Band Fest. Congratulations to River Heinrich Bondra, Lydia Norella, Emma James, Devon Collier, Brady McKernan, Ethan Albuter, Felix Camara, Caleb Steele, Frederick Mash, and Claire Huffman. Five NAMM students will perform in the PMEA's Elementary Sing Fest. Congratulations to Shaleez Donaldson, Carly Dow, Kayla Matvey, Julia Pearson, and Tristan Shea. Four NAMMs musicians will play in the PMEA's Elementary String Fest. Congratulations to Ella Milliken, Lila Walsh, Noah Paula, and Emma Krichmer. We continue to be proud of the Bethel Park Music Program, which develops outstanding musicians and vocalists at an early age to be recognized at these local, regional, and state music events. Students who are participating in the Independence Middle School Inventors Club this year are learning about the principles of flight as they each build a remote-control airplane out of foam board. Through their participation, they are learning how to use the laser engraver, 3D printer, and CNC router. This year, fifty students are taking advantage of this program, which Principal Mr. Minch hopes will help them to develop a lifelong interest in flight and perhaps even spur some students to consider pursuing a career in aviation. Congratulations to Neil Armstrong Middle School Gate students Lila Walsh, Meredith Myers, James Sype, Gavin Stower, and Hallie McGuff, who finished in second place at the Middle School Science Bowl, which was held at Carnegie Museum of Natural History. For this competition, the students had to problem-solve and participate in scavenger hunts related to three main topics: the dinosaur exhibit, the reptile room, and a hands-on geology lab. If you visited the Bethel Park Community Center, the Spencer YMCA, the Bethel Park Public Library, or Sheridan Senior Living on Saturday, February 9th, between 9:00 a.m. and noon, you probably saw staff members from Lincoln Elementary School who were there who were there to make a difference at Bethel Park by participating in a community service project they call "For the Love." They had enough materials with them to make 198 fleece scarves that they are donating to several organizations such as the AGN Cancer Institute, St. Clair Hospital Breast Cancer Center, Overlook Green Allegheny County Children and Youth Services, and South Hills Interfaith Movement. Their goal was to wrap the recipients of the scarves in love. We thank the Lincoln staff for giving up a Saturday morning to make this project a reality. Lincoln Reading Specialist Mrs. Di Gregorio turned her room into a place where students in the Lunchtime Writers Club can meet during their lunch periods on Wednesday to work on writing and illustrating their books that they are entering into WQED's annual Young Writers Contest. Mrs. Di Gregorio is there to help the students with details such as character development, building a story with solid story structure, including a beginning, middle, and end, and many other writing skills. Once students have their stories completed, they are bound and will be sent off to WQED for the competition. Additionally, a second copy of the book is printed and bound and made available to the Lincoln Library for students to read. We are pleased to announce that all Bethel Park Elementary Schools are now partnering with WQED to offer evening programming for parents and students to work on together. Franklin just began its first program centered around PBS Scratch Junior Coding Program. Early Tuesday, fourteen Franklin families are gathering in the Franklin Library for a light dinner together before embarking on some fun challenges that will have them designing and presenting their designs with a final session. The program provides an opportunity for families to learn together and teaches the accessibility of technology, as well as that it's okay to learn by making mistakes. Washington families had fun working and learning together at the school's first Family STEM Night. This event was hosted by the Washington PTO and held in the school's cafeteria. Families had the opportunity to rotate through ten different stations, spending about ten to twelve minutes at each station, exploring and learning before heading to the next station. If there was a way to get to the next station, activities such as cup-stacking challenge, paper-plate maze, and puzzles were available to pass the time to keep the creativity flowing. It was another great night of family learning together. Bethel Park High School Child Development Students further developed their teaching skills by hosting Junior Achievement Days at Penn and Franklin Elementary Schools. The high school students worked groups of four and were assigned to a specific classroom, where they spent the day guiding the elementary students through several grade-appropriate hands-on activities to teach them about financial responsibility, business, and entrepreneurship. The curriculum is provided by Junior Achievement and it is a great day of learning for both the high school and the elementary students. Here's our monthly reminder about the district's vision of the 2018-19 school year, which is innovative mindsets. We are pleased that our teachers are embracing the concepts and incorporating these ideas into their teaching. The Bethel Park Great Alumni Hall of Fame recently inducted six new members into the class of 2019. Congratulations to April Brucker, Barbara Faldum, Debbie Kelly Ferlick, Jane Gaskeb, Jim Gaskeb, sorry, Tim Maury, and Mike Westhoff. This is the seventh group to be inducted into the Alumni Hall of Fame, which recognizes Bethel Park graduates for their outstanding professional and/or community service contributions. Kindergarten registration for the 2019-2020 school year will begin in March for students who will be at age five by September 1st, 2019. Parents are encouraged to print off or pick up a kindergarten registration packet and complete it in advance of their children's kindergarten registration date. On the day of registration, parents should bring their child, the completed packet, their child's original birth certificate, and proof of Bethel Park residency with them. The registration dates and times are on the screen before you, but we also want to point out that there is an evening registration on Monday, March 18th, for any parents who are unable to attend kindergarten registration during the day. Registration greatly assists the district with its planning for the upcoming school year, so we appreciate parents registering their children in March. Parents who have questions should contact their child's school. Bethel Park High School will stage the classic musical Annie Get Your Gun on Wednesday through Saturday, March 13th through the 16th, at 7:30 p.m. in the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. Tickets go on sale to the public on March 4th to the 12th, daily, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. in the high school mains lobby. There is also be evening sales on Thursday and Friday, March 7th and 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30. All tickets are $10 and can be paid for with cash or check payable to Bethel Park School District. We hope you will be able to join us for this wonderful Bethel Park tradition of excellence. Over 200 students are involved with this production. Break a leg to the cast and crew. We will see you at the show. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Vor. Student government?
So Bethel Park SGA has had a pretty busy couple of weeks in the last two weeks. So the week of February 11th, we had our Wish Week, where we set up shoeboxes, wrapped them in gift paper, and set them up in all the rotundas throughout the school. And students could fill them with sheets of paper with wishes, people would wish for things like pizza parties for a class or just maybe a fast food meal for a friend or something for a teacher. And then on Friday, to prepare for our Spirit Week, the next week, we had a Spirit Assembly. And the highlight of that was a fundraiser where a student could pay a dollar to throw a pie in one of their teacher's faces. And all those proceeds went to the Humane Society.
And then the week after Wish Week, we had our Spirit Week, in which we, each day, there was a new theme for, to raise spirit in the high school. And so after every day, we would move on to the, like, we would have a new thing every day. And on the end, like, throughout the whole week, we would be granting the wishes which the students gave to us the week before, like, wishes for pizza parties and donuts and homeroom. So we would be granting those wishes all throughout Spirit Weeks, which was last week.
Thank you. PTA, PTO?
Hello, I'm Gentony from Memorial. I have the report for our PTOs. Abraham Lincoln Elementary. Abraham Lincoln held the annual talent show on February 8th and everyone enjoyed watching over thirty acts presented by students and a bonus dance by Lincoln's teachers and staff. Students have raised more than $5,300 for the American Heart Association in the Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. The PTO meeting will be held on Friday, March 8th, at 9:30. And they will have a father-and-dollar dance called "I Love You to the Moon and Back" that will be held on March 29th. Ben Franklin Elementary says that February was definitely not a slow month. They kicked off their Jump Rope for Heart. The front entrance is flooded with support for the PTO and PTA Council food drive donations. They hosted a family ice skating party at the outdoor rink on February 10th, while partnering up with the trolley stop for a spirit night on Valentine's Day. Ben Franklin's attempting a second Sarah's Candy Sale for spring and Easter candy needs. Their Art and Science Fair was a huge success this past week and their awesome book door tradition was displayed as well. Lastly, they kicked off their Read-A-Thon this past weekend and they are looking forward to launching their Reading with the Stars program March 1st. George Washington Elementary, they had a very busy February as well. The students had an awesome time with their Valentine's Day parties. And to celebrate President's Day, students participated in a fun activity during the school on Feb, during, I guess, during the school hours on February 22nd. The students are still participating in the American Heart Association Jump Rope for Heart and have so far raised $3,500. They just completed their Pergies Plus fundraiser and are going to have a Sarah's Candies and Chestnut Hill Candles fundraiser coming up. Students also began working on their science experiments for the Art Science Fair and scheduled, that's scheduled for March 8th, and show their talents during the preview days for the 15th Annual Talent Show scheduled on April 5th. The school will hold its Spring Book Fair from March 4th to March 8th, during which each student will receive a free $4.99 book or a credit going towards a different book of their choice, courtesy of the PTO. Lastly, on March 13th, the students will enjoy the Beyond the Moon Education Musical Assembly from the Pittsburgh CLO. Memorial Elementary, we just wrapped up our STEAM club on Wednesdays that went for six weeks and tonight we had our Science and Art Expo. The STEAM club had a great turnout, starting with like over forty members during the first week and we're hoping to do it again next year. It was, we had a half a dozen IMS students who were volunteering and they were absolutely critical for our success. Without them, I don't think they would have been able to accommodate as many students as they did. We had an excellent turnout tonight and we also had a mad science demonstration during the Science and Art Expo and kids were having a lot of fun doing that. Science was fun. They had a pepperoni, we had a pepperoni roll fundraiser that was a big success. We sold over 3,600 rolls and currently have a spiritware sale for all of Bethel Park District, not just Memorial products. Memorial is also hosting the WQED Coding, the Scratch Junior, and that starts in March. And thanks to our Resource Officer, Tim Kirsch, we have a new drop-off policy for any items that kids may have forgotten and parents need to bring in later. So instead of having parents come into the office, they can just drop it off. The first set of double doors, there's a shelf and a form they can fill out, so. And then one member of the staff can come out and get it and bring it back into school, so it reduces the traffic number of students or parents coming in and out of the school. That's it for the elementary schools and I do have a report from Independence Middle School. IMS PTSO was thrilled to be able to help fund the very successful boys-only leadership development and the girls-only leadership development programs for the eighth graders at IMS this past month. They are currently selling those discount meal cards and plans are already underway for the end-of-the-year events for the seventh and eighth graders. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor's report? Committee report? Cindy, do you have anything to report?
Hey, Jill, I hope you can carry out this document for everyone in the other side of the hall of the building on the front. We spent the Pathfinder School this past Wednesday and I would like to thank our administrators, the many hard-working educators and staff, of course, our students, and especially our principal Nick Fratto and our head custodian Rob Lowstetter for all their extra efforts and my fellow Pathfinder board members for all the many hours that they have devoted to the new roof replacement that will be taking place at the Pathfinder School. Some of the details are available in tonight's agenda under Facilities and Service Committee, number two, item number two, which will be voted on this evening. I'm sorry I can't answer specific questions, but at the next meeting, I'll be happy to do so. So that's my report from the Pathfinder School for tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Ruhl.
Thank you, Cindy. Pam, do you have a report from?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I do from Steele Center. They had CTE Month in February and the culinary students cooked dinner and they were just so proud of themselves. We also always have two returning alumni who come and do presentations who have done extremely well in the work world and it's always exciting to see that happen. So that was this month. Also, Shasta is going to have their student exhibitions at Baldwin High- Also, Shasta is going to have their student exhibitions at Baldwin High School this year, and that'll be on March fourteenth, and that's always great. The students have some innovative projects, and we have them, bring them on display. So that's always something nice to see, and that's in the evening. And the AIU is taking on a new role. They've been chosen because of their Waterfront Academy to be the leaders in directing our forty-two schools to bring online learning into the schools, because they're trying to bring that charter school money back to the districts and have the students go take the courses online through their home district. So that's a nice, big move for the public schools and for the Allegheny Intermedia Unit. That, and that's all I have, the meetings I went to. Cindy, do you want to do curriculum, or do you want me to have someone here do it?
If you don't mind, so everyone can hear, please ask someone else to say what.
Okay. Okay, Barry, would you mind taking?
Public comment on the agenda.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm getting ahead of myself here, trying to get through. Any public comments on the agenda items?
Hi, Sharon Janisick, four-three-one-four, Anna Street. I wanted to comment on Personnel Number One, the Best Buddies stipend, and I wanted to thank you very much for bringing that program to our district. I'm very, very happy to see that. It's a wonderful program. I appreciate you committing the resources to make that successful. I hope that we can look at how that type of program can be broadened and look at other ways to bring a more inclusive environment for our students, particularly those who are not necessarily in a life skills or an autistic support classroom or a learning support classroom, but who are already in Gen Ed. And also educate our students at all grade levels in all buildings in general about disabilities and students with disabilities, and try to help create a more inclusive and welcoming environment with all of our students so that everyone can have successful peer interactions. So thank you for starting that with Best Buddies, and hopefully that's something that we can grow and kind of really expand upon. And also, I wanted to note that Personnel, for A, closing the Special Ed Para Professional position disappointed because there are still students who don't have access to enough Para services, but you already know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to business items. The Curriculum Committee, Barry, would you take that?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want to hand, open this up first to general discussion before we take these items to a vote?
This is a committee meeting.
No.
Because there's a combined committee and business meeting, right? So do you want to cover?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, you could do that probably, yeah. Is there any questions, any think, under curriculum?
Do you have a preference about the calendar, Dr. Pasquarela?
Well, I think we, we tried to give you just a couple of options to start with there, obviously, on the calendar. One thing that happened, I'll just draw attention to, I guess the administration's recommendation would be number, option one, but I'll just highlight a couple of things. One, we, we were looking to, part of that calendar is to cancel the two-hour delay on March twenty-fifth. That was going to be professional development, increased instructional time that we have. That's one piece, and that's on both options. The other thing is that the January thirtieth day would be made up on April twenty-second. The January thirty-first day would be made up on the twenty, May twenty-first, which is Election Day, and our assumption is that we would handle that the same way we've handled election days in the past, which is we'd have professional development for grades K to six, as those are voting, polling, polling places, and we would have instruction for grades seven to twelve. February first would be made up on June third. February twentieth would be made up on June fourth, and that would be an option one, the last day for the students. April second, we were just made aware not long ago, is a special election, so I'm not sure if the public knows that, but that, that has come about. So based upon that, we were, we were made aware of that. So again, we would recommend the same thing as we did before, where we have that as a student day for seven to twelve and a professional development day, K to six. Again, the reason behind that is where we're having polling places and where we are not having polling places. Records Day, that's more for the teachers and grades, would be June fifth in that example. February eighteenth, Act Eighty Day, now will be an in-service day on June sixth, and the May twenty-first, Act Eighty Day, will now be an in-service day on June seventh, last day for the teachers, so. One other advantage to option number one, even though we weren't originally supposed to have it, if we have school on May twenty-first at this given point, that would be another day for keystone assessing, for makeups and those types of things. So it's open to whatever the board wants to do, but I guess out of them, they're pretty similar, we would just, I guess if I had to make a recommendation, I'd say one.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I have a question. How are the cancellations due to, due to the power outage is going to affect all this?
In general, you could write to the state for the cancellations, and they give you a waiver. They've given waivers for those so far. We haven't gotten the last, most recent ones due to the power outages back, but in my time being here for sure, we've had multiple of them in different buildings over the past couple of years, and all of those are deemed to be approved as an exception.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There?
Anything else? Okay. Since, under the school calendar, there's two items. I'm going to move one of them. I'm going to move option one. Does it, I didn't hear any objections to that, and if there's, there is an objection, I guess you can ask to have that held out in the discussion.
Barry, why don't we just hold that item out and then deal with that separately? The one with the two options?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So, under Curriculum Committee, I'd like to move the following two items. Number two, professional development. And number three, school-sponsored overnight educational activities. And I think that's it.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Excuse me?
I said, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, roll call?
Barry, you can.
Okay, all in favor, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries as stated. Next one, Barry?
Okay. The other item under Curriculum Committee, I would, I move to adopt the option one under school calendar.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated. Pam, will you take Personnel? Any questions?
Under Personnel, does anyone have any questions before I move the different items? There were changes to the pay schedule, that's about the Best Buddies program, approval of the extra-duty responsibility program, resignation, staffing changes, so forth and so on. Any questions about any of those?
Yes. Under acceptance of resignations, three, B, two, A, I believe it is. Could you clarify, could you clarify, Dr. Pasquarela, about the part-time special education pair? Is that, am I on the right?
Yeah, I think you are.
Oh, no. Four, A. Four, A. Could you clarify the reason we're closing?
Yeah. So the, this individual position is being closed at this present time because a student that was receiving the needs has moved out of the district. And at a similar time, we had a staff member resign the position. I don't know if they were the exact same position, however, we had a student leave and we had a Para resign, so that is why.
All right. And I would like to hold out if we're going to vote.
Wait till, wait till I move them.
Sorry.
Now, I just wanted to make a comment also about Best Buddies, if that's okay, before we go into voting for it. Just like to thank Lori Sutton and some of the staff members at the high school who researched that program. I think it's going to be an excellent program for, for our students, and I really appreciate it. It was great that the union administration were able to work together to come up with this as a possibility for the upcoming school year, and I'm looking forward to real positive experience to students, for the students that are involved. So thank you, Mrs. Sutton.
Any other?
I think you do want to get, have Ken hold his items out before you move them off.
Generally, they hold out, and then you do.
Yeah.
Right. There are twelve items under Personnel. Does anyone want any held out?
Yes, I would like ten, B.
Ten, B?
Yes. Two, three, and five held out.
Two, three.
And you said four, A also.
Wait, wait, are you, are you under ten? Are you, are you saying two?
Ten, ten, B, two, three, and five.
Right.
Oh, okay.
B, two, three, and five, right.
So you want ten, B, two, three, and five held out?
Correct.
Yes. And I would like four, A, one also.
Okay. Any others?
What is, four, A, one?
I think there's only, I think there's only one thing under four. There's only one under four.
Just four. Yeah, four.
Just four. Right. Just hold out four.
Just hold out four.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time then, I would like to move, under Personnel Committee, changes to the extracurricular pay schedule, approval of the extra-duty responsibility program, number two. Number three, acceptance of resignations. Number five, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Number six, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Transportation Department. Number seven, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Teachers. Number eight, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Teachers. Number nine, change of assignment. And number ten, A. And number, and, and B, one, four.
Six.
Six, seven, eight, and nine. Number eleven, appointment of personnel to the alternative education program. And number twelve, approval of substitutes.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry, and motion carries as stated. Pam?
Okay, I'd like to move number four, and that is the approval of the staffing change, closing the Para Professional Special Education position.
Is there a second?
I need a second.
Okay. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you, did you get those numbers?
Yeah.
Save that again.
How many? We'll have to do a roll call.
Do a roll call again.
Yeah. Hold over a roll call. Okay.
Ms. Buckley? Mr. Christians?
Nay. No.
Mrs. Cook?
Con.
Mrs. Lovett?
No.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Mayall?
No.
Mrs. Urle?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Motion carries as stated. Six, three.
Okay, I'd like to move number ten, B, two, three, you want them separate?
All together.
Ten, B, two, three, and five.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those, are you going to say something? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries as stated. Facilities and Services, Mr. Workmeister. Any questions on anything?
Yeah, there's two items under Facilities and Services Committee. Are there any discussions for either of them, the first one being the repair of the combination oven at the high school, and the second one is the roof replacement project at Pathfinder School that Mrs. Buckley had just talked about earlier?
I'd just make a comment on, on number one. Just as a reminder, this was already approved in January. We're just, you know, bubbling in the vendor that gave us the lowest cost retroactive, so it's not, it's not again. Okay.
The Pathfinder School, was that, what, what part of our budget does that come out of? Was that something that was planned that we'd been setting aside, or is that kind of a surprise, or?
The resolution, I mean, they've been speaking about it, and we've been getting updates. The resolution says that it'll come out of next year's budget. It'll, it'll come out after July one-nineteen and prior to August seven, so Mr. Karazie will put that share in the budget.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
I have to get before you do a motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, for, under Facilities and Services Committee, we have two items, repair of the combination oven at the high school, and number two, roof replacement project at Pathfinder School. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as stated. Finance Committee, Mr. Amadis?
Yeah, there are ten items under the Finance Committee this evening. Before I move them up onto the floor for a vote, are there any discussions on any of these items?
Yes, I, I had a couple of questions. First, on number six, purchase of information technology equipment, I believe it was wireless access routers, or wireless access points, I'm sorry. We're a little bit ahead of schedule on this, but is the, is the infrastructure there usable for the new ones, like the wiring and everything for the wireless access points?
Yes, we're good on that. We have ten-gig backbone between the buildings and ten-gig backbones within every building. And so we do have adequate bandwidth to support new access points.
Okay. Now, between, or out to the access points, are we looking at adding any access points, or are we just looking at replacing?
Well, right, right now, I'm looking primarily at doing a one-to-one replacement. There are a few additional access points beyond what we have right now, looking at targeting areas like large group rooms that currently don't usually have very many access points in them, and you could use a few more, and also a few outdoor access points.
And is that all going to be done in-house, or?
The plan would be for our group to remove the access points and, you know, in coordination with maintenance and replace them on a one-by-one basis.
Is that as well as any additional access points, pulling the cabling that is required for that?
It, it would be, although we're, we would strategically try to place them where we already have cable.
Okay. That's all I had on that.
One other point on that, I just think it's important that we're approving this, and then, you know, obviously, we would be getting, and it's through the PEPM, which is the state contract, and we're going to be looking at some other vendors. One, one key component to this, though, is that the district will be able to file for E-rate, and we'll see a substantial amount of money returned to us, most likely. We have to apply for it. There's no direct guarantees, but I would say, Mr. Ryer, that you'd say it's, it's pretty fair that if we meet the timelines, which is the reason why we have to get this on there, we stand to save a considerable amount of money.
Roughly, our E-rate discounts about forty percent. So, you know, that, that, that amount minus forty percent, if, if approved, would be what we'd be looking at.
So that, that's a, that's a large reason, another reason why we want to, we want to get this through. Although E-rate does have a tendency to replenish over years, there's no guarantee, and it could go up or down depending on funds, so.
This is the last year of a five-year cycle, and so in this five-year cycle, there, there was so much money, and we've, we've used as much as we could towards eligible purchases. However, at this point, if we don't use the funds remaining to, if we don't apply for the funds remaining. the funds remaining, and we let them go, and they don't replenish in the next five-year cycle, then we've lost that opportunity.
Which is substantial. So, I think, being that we have that money in there, I think it's, it's, it's a reason to move forward on replacing that. Even though we, we may or may not be able to stretch it a year or so more, I think it's wise to use, when you're talking about 40 percent savings, I think it's, it's a wise recommendation.
Thank you for sharing that with the public. That is in our agenda, but I often forget that people who are watching this on video, and the people in the public don't always have the same agenda as us. So, thank you for sharing that. The next question I had was for number seven, approval of purchase of informa, information technology equipment. It looks like panic buttons in an emergency system. Just simple, well, two questions about that. Is this just for the buttons, or is this for the buttons and the installation of any?
So, the link system is comprised of the software and the server on which it runs, and the physical buttons that will plug into PCs.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, there's, there's a few pieces there. We'll, we'll be installing it locally, you know, on our own. There, but it's, all three of these things work together.
All right. Second question I have on that is, would this be something that would be eligible for the Act 44 grant, since it is a security infrastructure component?
The answer to that is, it may have been, but we have already used our $25,000, as I think we, we passed already for our, and then there's a Part B. Part B was already turned in, and we, we wrote that with regards to security cameras for both the buses and some, some in the elementary schools. So, to answer your question, we've submitted those.
But, just to clarify, that $25,000 is a $25,000 minimum, so next year, if this is still available for next year, we could always apply for things such as this in that package, in that grant package that we're applying for, correct?
I would say that, you know, next year, if they continue to fund it, as they said they would, we would read the regulations in that given grant. To your point, I couldn't say for sure, but it's reasonable to say that these types of things are something that could be considered. I wouldn't know until I completely read the grant and saw the regs.
Okay.
But, probably.
They could change it.
They could, I mean, but, probably.
I, I have one question, number five, Live Well Allegheny Status. That's under Finance, and I was wondering, what, is it under Finance for? Is that?
Well, it kind of could go, I, I think they just kind of put it underneath there, as we were building the agenda, to find somewhere where, that it would fit contracts and a collaboration without Allegheny Health Department. I guess you could have put it underneath other, or a variety of places, but Live Well Allegheny Status is something that we're approving, where our school district, along with our borough and municipality, are going to be working together to advertise and continue to grow, and create healthy environments for our students and community.
Yeah. Mr. Means and I were at the meeting for that, and I didn't see any cost. I just wondered, it's not a, we don't have a number here, as far as the cost to us directly.
I think many of the things right now that are listed, that we do, we already do, we already offer that to our students, and there might be some additional programming as things go on that we would expand upon, but right now, we're not asking for anything additional that, what we're already doing.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, good.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment on number eight, and thank Mr. Ryer for, you know, doing due diligence to compare a variety of bandwidth companies, and getting the best price that we could possibly get, and, and increasing the amount of bandwidth and connectivity that we got. So, I do appreciate that.
Jim?
Would anybody want, want any of these 10 items held out for an individual vote? Hearing none, I move all 10 items under Finance Committee, number one being the February 2019 salaries and bills, number two being the January 2019 financial report, number three being budgetary transfers, number four being approval of agreement with NGR curtailment specialist, number five being Live Well Allegheny Status, number six, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment, number seven, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment, number eight, approval of the information technology service and maintenance contracts, 2019 to 2020 E-rate, number 10, the acceptance of a donation, and number 10, Kennedy Driving School.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. Motion carries stated. Mr. Means?
Mrs. World, we're going to have a discussion item. So, just, yeah, we.
Discussion item.
Mm-hmm. So, just real quick on that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ryer for a very brief presentation here. This, if you recall, after some of the issues where the internet went down earlier in this year, we approved Mr. Ryer to go out and have a vulnerability assessment summary done to kind of give us an idea of where, in fact, we may be weak, or where we need to, where we may need to improve, to make sure that we would, you know, be able to protect our internet from going down, like we had, if you might recall from the beginning of the year. So, we approved that, and now he, Mr. Ryer got the results, and he wanted to give a brief overview on that.
So, this scanning work actually goes place in December, and we, we looked at a couple of different companies and chose SISO LLC to perform the targeted external network vulnerability, and an internal active directory scan. And so, the technical diagnostic, looking from the outside end at several key IP addresses, and the observations were that there were no critical or high severity findings, which is good. And so, and there were no high.
Could you just repeat that?
There were no critical or high severity findings.
Thank you.
So, which is good. There were three medium severity findings, one low severity findings, and nine informational findings. And the medium findings, we needed to secure our Prosoft server with a certificate, and we worked with Prosoft to do that. We have web hosts that are running an older version of IIS, and they need to be updated, and that will take place this summer. And we have some login help information that we need to work on, helping folks understand what need, what's appropriate to put out there and what isn't. And then, this is an analysis of our internal active directory, and so, this actually here is, is a, is a vulnerability that was identified, that if you log on to one of the servers with an admin account, while everybody else is logged into it, it's possible to jump across from here to here and gain greater access. And so, with that information, we were able to change the access levels for some accounts to minimize that. The AD observation and recommendations constrain the maintenance of application servers, requiring administrative login style hours. We need to change a certificate that's on the domain controller that was originally established in the year 2000, which is not a huge deal, but because it could involve the little risk, we're not going to do that until summer either. And, and that's it. So, overall, the report was pretty good.
Did we ever find what the cause of those attacks, you know, where it was coming from?
They were widely distributed, denial of service attacks, so no, we did not find the, there was not a key source that we could just pinpoint and say, well, here it is.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Jim?
Okay, there's a number of items under the Policy Committee. Would anybody like to discuss any of them?
I have a question about the Student Assistance Program. 7th through 12th grade was taken out. Does that mean it's K through 12 now, the Student Assistance Program?
Right. That's what we're moving toward, towards. As far as that goes, it is our belief and our recommendation anyway, that we should be moving in that direction. It is a little unclear, although it does appear at this given point that the law indicates that it, in, in some cases, that it's highly recommended, if not mandated, to go K to 12 now. So, we've always had a similar system where we identified students, but this will just formalize it, and Mrs. Sutton's working on getting teams and administrators trained.
Okay. I have another question about 006, the meetings. I'm assuming that all those changes are the PSBA's, and none of those changes are just from us. I guess I'm asking the solicitor that.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know if they, I assume that they are PSBA changes. You didn't make any changes.
I mean, to the best of our knowledge, we look at what the PSBA changes are, and I would just follow up by saying, if there are choices, if there are any choices, we go back to see what is written in the previous policy, and try to make that consistent to what you're doing. So.
I also had a question about 006. Looking over it, it looked like a whole bunch of housekeeping, like just terminology changing, board member to school director, changing the organization of where things fell. But, one thing that did raise my concern was, at the beginning, quorum. It says a quorum, the existing says, a quorum shall be five board members, either physically present or present by teleconference at a meeting, and that struck to be changed to, a quorum shall consist of a majority of the members of the board. I'm just curious, would that, would that mean that we would not be able to be remotely present, like?
No, the case law says that, the Milk Marketing Board says that you can't participate by phone, so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't read that as taking it out. I don't know why PSBA makes all the changes that they do, and sometimes, really, it's just like verbiage that.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, doesn't, I guess, doesn't matter one way or another, but, no, you are still, you are permitted by case law to participate by phone, as long as you're on speaker.
Just as a piece of knowledge, too, not always, but many times, when you see school code next to it, it doesn't give you much ability to not edit it the way that they have interpreted it, because it lines up to the school code.
Right.
They give you choices in some cases, but in many cases like that, there's not really, on all policies, not just on this one, when it identifies school code and then makes the change, we usually go with what they say.
If that were the case, just for my clarification, if that were the case, would that school code be in red like it is at the top of?
Well, the school code did not change there, so I, I don't know why. I, I can't answer that one. But, no, I mean, I, I still read it the same, that, you know, it's still a majority of the members of the board, which is five, because you have nine board members. I guess if you, even if you had eight, it would still be five. I guess if for some reason, you know, you had two vacancies and it was seven, then it would apply, I mean, I've never seen that in 20 years, but whatever. You know, but no, you can still participate by phone.
Okay, that was my main concern.
Yeah.
I just had one question on the, the bullying and cyberbullying. You know, we have a, a policy here, but that's kind of passive. Could we have at some point a review around the different, you know, activities? What are we doing to be proactive around bullying, cyberbullying, in terms of the programs, you know, that we have going on? I think it's important, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of issues around bullying, and I think it's a, it's kind of a leading indicator, or an instigator, for some of the other, you know, threats and violence that we see.
More or less just an update on.
An update, yeah. So, what are the, yeah, you know, the policy's just, it's passive, okay, but what are we doing to be more active around, you know, managing, controlling bullying and cyberbullying?
Yeah. And, and in answer to Mrs. Dobis' question on these policies, as far as it being strictly from PSBA, there was one, like in particular, that I'm aware of, that 707, we had made some discussion, and we'd made a change to it, so there might be a couple little changes in it, but I think it was mostly just all the PSBA's that were in there.
Yeah, I, I remember that. I was just asking about number six in particular.
Just six in particular?
Yeah, because it seemed to, it was about the majority and the quorum, and.
Yeah.
It just seemed a little shaky to me.
That is not up for my.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's why I asked you.
I questioned too.
The things I can't still understand is, like, we changed the word will to shall, and supposedly, they mean almost the same thing, really. It's not should, but shall and will are almost the same, right?
Right.
So, I don't know. I'm an engineer, and I don't appreciate those words. Okay, fine.
Any other questions? Jim?
Okay, I'd, I'd like to handle this in three different parts of it, so, okay, we have a, item number five is policy revision, first of three readings, so there won't be any action on it. And that said, 006 meetings, 236 Student Assistant Program, 707 Use of School Facilities, 904 Public Attendance at School Events, 904 Attachment, Public Behavior at School Events. Okay, then we have four items we're going to take action on. Number four, we're actually planning on waiving the procedure, so I would like to move item number three, waiver, waive of procedure, so we can skip the three readings for policy 247, 247 Attachment, policy 249, and 249 Attachment. Do I have a second?
Second.
And my one comment on that would just be that, you know, this is important, so that we can get this information out to the principals, so they can get them in handbooks or posted in classrooms, or wherever that needs, make sure their handbooks basically line up.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries is stated.
Okay, that leaves us with three more items. Number one, policy revisions, final reading, and that would include 103 Non-Discrimination, Discriminatory Harassment, 103 Attachment, 103.1 Non-Discrimination, Qualified Students with Disability, 103.1 Attachment, 104 Non-Discrimination in Employment Practices, number 104 Attachment, number 222 Tobacco and Nicotine for Students, number 323 Tobacco and Nicotine for Employees. Number two, policy rescinds, final reading. That would be number 423 Tobacco Professional Employees, number 523 Tobacco Classified Employees, and that would also, then, number four, policy revisions, those are the ones we just waived the three readings on. That's 247 Hazing, 247 Attachment, 249 Bullying slash Cyberbullying, and 249 Attachment. I move items number one, two, and four.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries is stated. Other? Ken, do you want to take other?
Sure. Under other, there are two items, number one, student agreements, and number two, board meetings. Would anybody like any discussion under other? Hearing none, I'd like to move the number one, student agreements, and number two, board meetings.
Second. Is there a second?
Oh. A second.
Okay, okay. Any questions or comments? And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries is stated. Now, time for public comments. Please state your name and address.
Thomas Archer, 1012 Willow Glen Drive. I sent an email last week about full-day kindergarten, while listed social, academic, and economic benefits of such program. The main objection raised by some members of the board was that five-year-olds are not prepared for a full day of instruction. Full-day kindergarten is not like first grade, it is not a day of sitting at a desk. The same material is covered as in a half-day, but there's time for social play, enrichment such as art and music, and individual attention from the teacher. Also, most children are already familiar with full-day instruction, as evidenced by the large number of daycares and their extensive waiting lists, so a transition to a full-day kindergarten should not be too onerous. However, any child not ready for kindergarten could wait a year before enrolling, or you could even offer a half-day and full-day program, but you should be prepared to also institute a lottery in order to manage the demand for a full-day spot. I encourage the board to. I encourage the board to speak with parents and survey them regarding an interest in full-time kindergarten. I suspect you will be as surprised as the boards of Keystone Oaks, South Park, Thomas Jefferson, and a growing list of school districts locally and nationwide who have already adopted this change. If you didn't read my email, the summary is that full day kindergarten improves socialization skills, results in fewer grade retentions, allows the midday bus route to be cut, and results in higher standardized test scores.
Anyone else?
Hi, Shayna Willis, 5844 Manongahela Avenue. I've noticed over the past seven years, a downward trend in our K through eight school scores. When my, when I chose to have my daughters enrolled in Bethel Park, we were 34th in the state. We're currently 71st in the state. This is something that's concerning, mostly because each year on average, we're going down by five more spots, so next year's not looking any better. And I'm not seeing any changes being implemented. One of the things that we could do is use something that's completely free to the schools, at least it was free last time I looked. The CDT testing that's provided by the state could give you a good idea of where every child coming into the schools stands so far as state standards. If you did that, that would be free. We would have to spend less time on prep for hoc time. We could use our hoc time more efficiently and we could find better ways to introduce concepts to students. I know in some of the hoc times, children are being given packets, which is not a best practice for helping struggling students in education. These tests are supposed to assess the instruction that our children are receiving and not our children. They're the only ones that seem to be paying a cost for poor instruction at this point. They're being given packets. I've been in middle school classrooms where they're sat in front of computers for math remediation, which is against all best practices in especially math instruction. And these students should be given rich, problem-based learning. They should be taught to love school. Their creativity should be engaged, and that's what we should be doing to raise our scores. I also just want to know if our CCAC college and high school program is being accredited. I know there's a process for that, and I'm wondering if the board has any insight on to whether or not CCAC is actually going to accredit our high school in, or our college and high school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, anything from the board? Any comments, questions?
Do we know anything about the accreditation from CCAC or not?
I mean, what I could say is we've been trying to partner with, with CCAC. We've been working with them. They've been trying to be more flexible than they have in the past to allow some of our staff members to meet their qualifications, even though our staff members are, in my opinion, more than highly qualified to do so. There are some regulations in their contract from CCAC that require some things, so they've been more flexible in that. So, as far as accreditation, that could be used in a variety of ways. I'm not sure the specific reason that it was stated today, but I would say that in general, we are trying to partner with them and if we get, we, we get accepted or our, our teacher becomes a, almost like an adjunct professor, then any of those credits that they would receive would, you know, would be able to be transferred. I know that there are some things with regards to formal accreditation, if you could get enough programs, folks are able to earn an associate if you get enough credits together. So, that would be a nice goal for, for the district, but a lot of that's just going to come down to approval between, you know, their department heads and who are reviewing our teachers. And a lot of that just comes down to the level of education and, and credits that they have.
Thank you.
But is there, is there, I mean, is there something we should be doing? Is there like continued, you know, education of our teachers' curriculum, you know, investment in curriculum? What, what's the, kind of the-
The holdup?
The holdup?
Well, a lot of the holdup just comes down to saying, something like a department might say, you know, you're, you're teaching this math course, but we want you to have a master's in math, or you're teaching this history course and we want you to have a master's in history. And some folks in our educational system do, and different departments have different regulations. Others might have a master's in education and some of their credits might be continuing in math, but not specifically to the discipline. And each department has a little bit of a different set of standards from CCAC that they're looking through. We also, you know, obviously have partnerships with the University of Pittsburgh and looking at other colleges, so we'd like to work with CCAC and we plan on continuing to do so. However, you know, if, if by chance it's not working out, we could look to explore, which we have, other universities and colleges that would be able to extend our dual enrollment. Because I think it's priceless for the, to be honest with you, with the experience that you get for college and the high school, and to be able to attain those credits at a fraction of the cost. I know when I was a teacher and I had the ability to teach one of those classes through community college, you know, one thing I taught a lot of my students when we decided whether or not they were going to take it, is, is if you took what that course would cost full price and you run that out, if you had to take a loan out over the next 20 or 30 years, what that course would cost, as opposed to the, you know, being able to take it at a fraction of the cost right then and there and have it done. Another big thing, a lot of the community colleges, if you do then attend a state college now, there's regulations that come forth that they have to accept those credits in one way or another. Not all colleges, but state colleges. So, I think that's another interesting piece of, of information for our students. So, we're continuing to develop and work with them. I think Ms. Wells, if, we did get approved just recently on a class or two, an additional one.
I believe mathematics, math, law, and math, which we did not have any math courses last year. It will require students to test into if they have to be at a certain level. We will get that testing here at the schools during the school day. If any student is interested in following that class, they just emailed me today, so I don't have the specifics of how many exceptions we'll be offering for that. But they did approve two of our mathematics instructors to offer that course because that is the introductory course that will then allow our students to grow in mathematics and in science courses through the CCAC program.
So, we're, we're going, we're moving in that direction. I think it's a great opportunity for our students.
Any other comments from the board?
I just, I just would like to comment on the full day kindergarten comment. And we have looked at that, and several years ago, we looked at it very closely, and we don't have enough room in our schools in order to have full day kindergarten. We did talk about four or five years ago about a kindergarten center, but that was very costly. So, it's not that we've ignored that issue. We have looked at it and it just isn't feasible.
Do you know, do you know how long ago it was? I guess-
Four or five years ago. We had the whole kindergarten center.
It was more than four or five. It may have been about eight years ago now already.
Well, I've only been on the board for four or five, so it had to be the first year I was on the board.
Was that when Mrs. Dr. Stark?
Yeah, Mrs. Stark. I'm sure that, Dr. or-
Dr. Stark?
Yes. Mrs. Rourke could fill us in.
We have both the board members on. I've been on the board for a long time, I'm sitting in the audience. For what it's worth, I have all the data, I have all the folders, I have records of all the meetings and everything that we collected. So, if a board member would like to prove that, I'll offer it out. Thank you.
I'd like to comment that I've been on the board almost four years and I was in the meetings with the kindergarten discussion. It was right here with a lot of other people.
So, it was, it was just, yeah.
So, it was less than even four years. So, yeah, like you're saying, it was talked about seven years ago, three years ago, maybe three and a half.
My point is that we've talked about it and we just can't-
Right, exactly.
It's not been ignored.
It's not been ignored, we just can't, it's just not feasible right now.
Exactly like you're saying, right. That's what I was trying to support to say, yeah, it's been talked about many times and as recent as like three and a half years ago. So, you're right. And it's, it's a good thing to look at periodically. Something might change to make it, you know, more practical, but there's a lot of reasons why we could not do it. Also, I'd like to say that, first apologize that we wore lately, Mrs. Roll said, it wasn't that we were just in the room having important discussions. We even came here before six. So, we even moved up a whole hour trying to get this stuff done, but if you're not on the board, you don't realize the importance of the executive session and trying to discuss things and that, and we just ran out of time. I don't know why, but nonetheless, we do. And that's, that's, we're sorry about that. We don't try to do that on purpose, believe me. Second, I'd like to thank you for being here. Third, I'd like to congratulate the cheerleaders again for, you know, all those wins, you know, being two years of, I think it was, what was it, the Whippy Old and then three for state championships or something like that. It's a big feat, so that's a good thing there. So, that's it. Keep it simple.
I just have one more thing on the, the kindergarten topic. I guess if we have the data, I think it would be good to take a look at it. And even if we can't do it now, I think that, you know, we do have a, have to have a long-term facilities discussion, you know, what's the future plans for, you know, different buildings, expanding buildings and things like that. And I think that then, you know, full day kindergarten would, you know, could become a part of that long-term facilities discussion.
Thank you, Barry. I just want to echo what you just said. I don't want to ambush anybody. I actually sent this to you at the beginning of the executive committee meeting, so I understand the board and superintendent hasn't gotten a chance to look at it. But I wrote down an outline of what a long-term facilities plan would look like according to the Pennsylvania School Board Association. And that's part of what it is, is looking at student capacity, class norms, the vision of the district, where we want to be. So, I, I do think that that would be a helpful tool in that assessment with the kindergarten. I also think that the changing demographics of having two parents at work full-time works better in a lot of situations. We have a lot of concerns over daycare and how to get kids to and from school, particularly in kindergarten. There, there are a lot of things that could be addressed by looking at this as a more comprehensive view of what that kinder, that full day kindergarten could do. Along with the socialization, the more time, we, we had a conversation a couple of years ago before I was on the board about the Wonders program in kindergarten, whether it may or may not be too, too vigorous. Well, if you have a longer day and more time for socialization, more breaks, it helps along those lines also. So, there are a lot of things that could be addressed if we look at it in more comprehensive long-term views. But again, I sent you guys the email a little late. I know none of you got to review it yet, but this information's also available for free to all, all of our board members through the online courses, through the PSBA. But other than that, I want to congratulate the PTOs on a very active month. I get to participate in some of the Ben Franklin events, which were all phenomenal. And I want to congratulate the cheerleaders and all of our students and our wonderful district, our wonderful staff.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one comment. There's been some talk about the HVA system upgrade at, at the high school, and people were saying, well, it's only, I guess the school's what, eight years old it's been in, in use, and saying, why are we having to upgrade this HVA system so soon? My parents bought a refrigerator when they got married back in the, about 47 or, I guess they bought it about 48. It's still running at my son's house. It was passed on to him. I don't think it's ever been repaired. And the reason is, when they built stuff back then, they built everything extra heavy duty and they weren't really concerned about energy efficiency. When they built the high school, they went through a, for an energy efficient high school and they got three green globes for their energy, energy efficiency. And one of the reasons that you're able to get that efficiency is by building systems which work closer to the edge. Otherwise, you don't overbuild the HVAC, HVAC system, but you build it so it's running pretty much at maximum capacity all the time. That's hard on stuff. It wears out faster. That's the reason your new refrigerator's only lasting five or 10 years. So, I think that's one of the reasons that this HVAC system is having to be not replaced, but augmented after only eight years.
Any other questions or comments? Just remember the school play coming March 13th and 14th. Hope that you all can make it. Thank you for attending tonight. Are you done? You want to say something? Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Where did you get your information?